All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. I appreciate your attendance. This is Board of County Commissioners meeting Wednesday, January the 4th. Thank you for being in our audience. Again, we're recording this. It is going to be streamed live on our website, as well as available on YouTube after the meeting, of course. I want to say thank you for being here. We do have an important meeting today. We've got some important business to take care of. One of the things on our agenda today is to take another step forward, potentially in Law Enforcement Training Center. I'm excited to hear more about that and to hopefully vote on that. Today, we have an annexation issue with the city of Wichita. We'd like to look at that today. We actually have some interesting public information announcement stuff coming to enjoy today, so I'm looking forward to that as well. Anyway, so I'll just say thank you for being here and for being a part of our meeting today. And with that, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Sherdell Brethitt, Senior Saint Mark United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flexing.
What is spring. Gracious God, we thank you for yet another year that you've allowed us to enter. We pray for your guidance, your direction. Scripture reminds us that in Proverbs 3:5 and 6, "To trust you with all of our heart, to lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways to acknowledge you, you promise to direct our path." God, we so desire to please you. We ask God for this commission, that for every decision that they make, that it may be ordained by you. Bless this community. Bless all the inhabitants and those that travel through, that we might govern the way you would have us do. This we pray and ask in Jesus Christ's strong name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Say thank you once again to Reverend Sherdell Brethitt with the Saint Mark United Methodist Church for being here, and I appreciate that scripture passage this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Excuse me, I have to do this correctly. I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for the date of January the 4th, 2017. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Enrew?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Commissioner Ransow?
Present.
Chairman Howell?
Present.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Public information announcements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer. I have a few things to share with you today, but first, I'd like to start by highlighting a few of our employees who've shared the holiday spirit of the past few weeks with the community, starting with Yula West. You know Yula from the front desk at the county courthouse here, and I've got a video highlighting her holiday cheer, so let me pull it up really quick.
When you walk through these doors, she's the first one you see.
Good morning, Mrs. Sanna. Hello. This is my family. The whole courthouse is my family.
Yula West has been with Sedgwick County for 47 years. She's known here for her kind smile and warm heart, oh, and also her holiday spirit.
I am helping others, and that's what I'm supposed to be here for. Hey, how many of you have been good this year? Have you been good? I know what Christmas really means, and I would like to share the joy, the blessings, and helping others throughout the coming year.
Her festive decorations and holiday attire put a smile on the face of everyone she meets.
I really don't see a stranger. They're just friends I haven't met yet.
It's that holiday spirit that led her to help a friend sell peanut brittle during the holidays for a good cause.
We just do it together with joy, and it's going to charity.
Spreading joy is what Yula does best, no matter what season we're in, something she continues to do here at Sedgwick County.
I've enjoyed all of my life. I am blessed with good help. As long as I can help somebody, I'm happy.
And the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office donated over 130 boxes to 70 families here in our community with money from the Sheriff's Benefit Fund, and we have a video highlighting their service as well.
Office, we're here today at the Dillan's Distribution Center out at Kellogg and 215 Street West. What we're doing today is the Sheriff's Benefit Fund raises money throughout the year to provide food boxes for needy families within Sedgwick County. We're here today with people from the Sedgwick County Detention Facility, from the Sheriff's Department, and as well as fire, EMS, dispatch. They all come here, as you can see, they're all stacking loading boxes right now, and what we do is it's 550 families that we will be providing this food for, for the holidays. Once we get done here for the next two and a half days, this afternoon, Thursday and Friday, what we do is have the beat deputies, volunteers that come down to our facility, and all of what we're going to be doing is delivering these boxes to the residences. We'll be out at the EMS post down at the Stillwell Yards, where we'll hand out the boxes to, as the beat deputies, WPD will show up and they'll pick up boxes that are in their beat areas and get those delivered between now and Friday evening. Deputy Romero, what's your?
And one more person who was celebrating the holiday spirit with his employees, our EMS director, Scott Hadley, personally baked, oh, personally baked 125 red velvet cupcakes for EMS personnel who were working on Christmas Day, and he delivered them Christmas Day. So there's a photo of Scott with all of the cupcakes there. Commissioners, you have a busy day today. After this meeting, we will have a reception honoring the outgoing through District Commissioner Peter John. That will be about 10:30 this morning here on the third floor of the courthouse, 525 North Main. The reception is open to the public. And then this evening, the South Central Kansas Legislative Delegation is hosting their 2017 Legislative Public Forum here at 6:30. Doors open at 6 o'clock. That will be in the jury room on the first floor of the courthouse, 525 North Main, and that is open to the public. With those announcements, Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Kate. I sure appreciate the information, and I want to say a couple of things real quickly. Yula is the best. I think everybody knows Yula. We love her. She is a tremendous individual, and she's been here, as someone said, 47 years in the video. That's just, it's amazing. I'm 53 years old, so almost my entire life, she's been down there taking care of business, and we just love her to death. So she's a wonderful, a wonderful person, and I appreciate what she does, bringing a holiday spirit to this building. And then, of course, the Sheriff's Office doing 130 boxes for people with needs, it's just a tremendous caring thing to do, and so, as I, and of course, Scott Hadley, of course, with the cupcakes, you know, cupcakes as well. The EMS folks, of course, just like our Sheriff's Officers on 911 and our firefighters and maybe some others, don't get any days off. They have to work normal schedule, so I appreciate them being sensitive to their employees and giving them love during the holiday season. And with that, I want to say Sedgwick County is working for you. I appreciate all the things that these individuals have been doing and being able to highlight their efforts this morning is really awesome, so say thank you to Kate for bringing that to our attention. All right, I think we're ready for the next item, please. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
All right, thank you. Has anyone signed up this morning to speak? And I see at least one. Come on up, please.
Chairman Howell, Commissioners, I'm Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lee Lou in Wichita, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank both of our departing Commissioners. Separately, I've learned from both of you. You know, Mr. Peter John, when I first started attending our commission meetings about six years ago, I noticed a lot of differences from my decade of being at the city, where the citizens mostly spoke, and then I come here and it's mostly the Commissioners spoke. And so we learn more about what your insights and the things that you care about. You know, you included your weekly jail report. How many people were in the jail? And discuss that. And you kept that up for several years, and that gave me insight to some of the concerns and the impacts on our community and what we're looking at. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize your perspective on history. You know, at first six months, I was kind of bored, but then I realized that you see today as how it fits into the history of our country and the world, where I noticed myself, I was just looking at today as today. So I learned from that positioning. Also, you know, I recognize that you kind of have a softer inside with your adoptions and stuff, although you're sharply spoken quite often. But I have learned from you, and I think that has been an interesting career. I think you've achieved a lot here on the commission during your period. So I wanted to say thank you, and I've enjoyed, and I still kind of hate to see you go. Commissioner Norton, I feel like you're part of my family. I'm almost get to the point of tears not being able to see you anymore. I feel like you've been the wisest voice up here, and I felt comforted when there are other issues going on that I know that you're present. It's been an interesting career of service. You know, here, you're managing targets, making big money, and when the tornado hit in Hayesville, you got into serving people and remained with that commitment. Your interest in the health and many of the other issues that weren't so popular then were things that really made an impact on a lot of people's lives. Well, I appreciate what you've done, and I'm sorry to see you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Lonnie Wright, for those comments. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak this morning? All right, seeing none. Commissioner Ransow?
Yeah, I would move or receive in the file comments.
Very well. I would second that motion and the discussion. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 19th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the regular meeting minutes of October 19th, 2006, as well as November 2nd, 2016. I meant October 19th, 2016, November 2nd, November 30th, 2016.
All right, that's items, argument. A motion and a second for items A, B, and C to adopt the minutes. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item D, resolution reappointing Dr. Timothy Gorel to serve as the Sedgwick County District Coroner.
Mr. Chairman, I represent County Counselor. Agenda number D is a resolution reappointing Dr. Gorel to serve as the Sedgwick County District Coroner. We just appointed him a few months ago to fill out a term. This will be the full four-year term that begins, actually, next Monday. The paperwork does appear to be in order, and he is present, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
So move.
All right, second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
All right, I think Dr. Gorel is here in our audience, so thank you for being here, for your service, and I think Mr. Arnold's ready to swear your name.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelly Arnold, County Clerk. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County District Coroner, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gorel, for stepping up and serving the county the way you do. I appreciate you very much. All right, next item, please.
New business. Item E, real estate purchase agreement for the Law Enforcement Training Center to be located on the Wichita State University Innovation Campus.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Misha Jacob Warren, Assistant County Counselor. I feel like I've been before you a lot on this issue these past couple of months, but as always, it is very exciting. I am before you today with one of the final steps in this process, and probably the final time you'll see me on this issue for at least a few months. Before you today is the real estate purchase agreement by and between Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and the development firm of MWCB LLC. If you'll indulge me a little bit, let me give you a little bit of background. On May 17th, 2016, city and county leaders held an en banc meeting, after which each entity signed a letter of intent committing to purchase the completed LETC building to be housed on the Wichita State University Innovation Campus. In that letter, the city and county agreed to split the cost of the building equally for a goal purchase price at the time of approximately $9.5 million. There was, of course, a $10 million cap on the purchase of that building. On November 2nd, 2016, I brought to you the interlocal agreement with the city of Wichita, which has now been signed by both bodies. This interlocal agreement was to describe the operations and maintenance of the building once we get into the building. It is now in the hands of the Attorney General for his signature. And finally, on November 14th, the county approved an agreement with the city of Wichita and the Wichita State Innovation Alliance, agreeing to assume the 99-year sublease upon which the LETC building will sit. The city has also approved that, and that's ready and waiting to go. So just a little bit about the agreement that's before you today. This is a real estate purchase agreement. It is very similar to all other real estate purchase agreements that the county enters into. We will be purchasing a completed turnkey facility. So at the time that we go to closing, just like a normal real estate transaction, this building will be owned jointly by the city and the county. The total purchase price is now $9,842,379. And if my math is correct, please feel free to check me, that's approximately $4,921,189.50 to be spent on behalf of each, the county and the city. This amount, as is typical with all real estate transactions, is due and payable immediately as with all available funds at closing. At this time, of course, we don't know when closing will be. We won't know that, of course, until the developers are finished. Also, upon closing, the city and county will assume the 99-year sublease that the developer currently has, and that is a sublease with Wichita State Innovation Alliance, for the lease of the ground, which I believe is at a dollar per year. So I, of course, will entertain any questions, but let me just tell you where we go from here. There will be a few next steps, probably a few months down the road. One will, of course, be the assumption of the sublease. I will be back before you to present that at the time of closing. There will also need to be a lease agreement with Wichita State University, as they will be occupying the third floor of the LETC building, so we will need to do a lease back to them. And I am working with Council for Wichita State, and we're already working on that. And of course, all of the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, the stuff that's going to go inside the building, and a team comprised of county and city representatives, including myself, is working, we're working on that right now, so it will all be ready to go. Before I entertain any questions, I do want to tell you that we have some outside attendees in the audience. We have with us Steve Barrett and Nestor Wegand, who are two representatives of the developer, MWCB, and of course, Dr. John Tomlin, who is Wichita State's Vice President for Research and Technology Transfer. I'm sure they would be happy to answer any questions at MI.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Before we go to the Commissioners, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the agenda item? All right, seeing none, we're bringing it back to the board here. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Enrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will approve this today, and I've been given information then that the city will, it's supposed to be on their agenda on the 17th of January?
That is what I hear this morning from Council for the city.
Okay, very good. Well, I've been a long time working through this process, and I'm eager that we should proceed.
All right, Commissioner Ransow?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the real estate purchase agreement and authorize the chairman to sign all associated documents.
A motion and a second, and just a final comment from me. So I want to say this is exciting. I think I may say, I may see some other things here in just a minute. Let me go to Commissioner Peter John real quickly. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I share the chairman's excitement. I would be interested at all if we've got a timeframe in terms of how soon we think we can meet these goals and objectives that you've outlined, and if whoever the appropriate person to answer that, I'm...
I'm not so certain that I am the appropriate person to answer that, but I'm imagining that maybe one of our outside attendees could answer that.
I was trying to, we're coming up, because then I'll just talk too long. But of course, I want to thank you for seeing this project all the way through. I know there's been many discussions, so I'm anxious to break ground and get started, and we want the building open by the close of this year, December 31st is my, I mean, if you know how my fast Innovation Campus has been going, I mean, I want this building to go just as fast, and if we got a good winter and everything like that, I don't see any problem with us meeting that, so by the close of the year.
Thank you very much.
I think, again, very exciting, and I know that Mr. Barrett's in our audience, I know, I believe you're anxious to, I've talked with you in the past, I believe you're thinking December 17th is still possible, okay? I want to say this is exciting, you know, this community's been wanting this for a very long time, and this commission, I want to say congratulations to this commission for getting this done. It has been a long discussion. Again, I like to say, I believe, I keep hearing the word, the number 17 years, this has been discussed and desired, and our Sheriff's Office deserves this, as well as Wichita Police Department deserves this, and our detention deputies, I think, as well. So appreciate the opportunity to finally get this thing moving forward, and so with that, we have a motion and a second, and any final discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Item F, island annexation request from the city of Wichita.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, here for an island annexation by the city of Wichita, proposed island annexation, and it would be for some property that's located near the intersection of Rock Road and 31st Street South. Looking at the map that's on the screen, you'll notice that the property that's proposed to be annexed is outlined in blue, and it is a 24-acre piece of property. The peach color indicates property that's currently owned by the, I'm sorry, currently within the city limits of Wichita. This property is just to the east of McConnell Air Force Base. On this next map here, which is zoomed out a little bit, you'll see McConnell Air Force Base to the west. Also, there's McConnell Housing just directly to the north of this property, and it's just, again, to the south of the current city limits of the city of Wichita. The, I was going to point out that island annexation, as you all know, it occurs when land is annexed that does not adjoin the city. And the state statute lays out some requirements for findings that you all have to make in considering these island annexations when a city requests it. First, the land is required to be within the same county as the city. Here it clearly is. Second, the owners of the property must petition or consent to the annexation. In this case, the owner actually petitioned to be annexed into the city of Wichita. And then, thirdly, the county commission has to, by a two-thirds vote, find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent growth and development of the area or that of any other city located within the county. The city of Wichita submitted this request to the county to make those findings. We completed our normal staff review on this matter. The response, the one response we did receive was from the planning department. They complete their typical review on this. They recommended that you find that this property would not hinder the proper growth and development of the area or any other city. They noted the property is within the city of Wichita's 2035 growth area. Also, it is not located within the growth area of any other city. Looking at a map, Derby is the next closest city, and it is located, its city boundaries are about three miles south of this property, so it's a ways away. The property is currently undeveloped land. It borders an undeveloped parcel to the east. The city had annexed through a consent annexation before some of the statutes were changed back in 2008. The annexation also proposes to annex some road right away. If you look kind of on the, there's a squiggly line on the right side of that parcel, that's road right away. It's currently not developed, but essentially, the point would be, the city would be, is proposing to take on the responsibility of any construction and maintenance of that roadway, as both those properties that would be benefited by it would be within the city limits of Wichita. The, also, the planning commission had a preliminary plat for this property in front of it. They did approve that, and it proposes 52 lots for the development of duplexes. It's important to also note with the proximity of this property to McConnell that their operations board reviewed this matter, and they did not have any objections to it going in there. Pursuant to the annexation, the city would provide police and fire services to this property that are currently provided by Sedgwick County Fire District Number One and the Sheriff's Office. It's also my understanding that the property owners requested to be annexed because they want to receive city of Wichita sewer and water services. I'd be happy to answer any additional, or any questions that you may have on this matter, and I'm not sure if the city has anyone here present as well, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Waggoner, for the presentation. I'll go to the audience first. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the agenda item? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the board. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Let me just say, this is in my district, and I am supportive of this proposal from the city, and I would be supportive of that. And so with that, I would like to move that we make a finding that the annexation will not hinder or prevent a proper growth and development of the area or that any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much. All right, next item, please.
Item G, agreement with Butler County Department on Aging to provide case management services to Butler County residents for the Senior Care Act program, 2017.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Division of Aging. Today, I bring before you this item, which is the agreement with Butler County Department on Aging to provide case management services. The Central Plains Area Agency on Aging will enter into this provider agreement with the Butler County Department on Aging to provide case management services to Butler County residents for the Senior Care Act program. The agreement details how the agency will provide case management services to Butler County residents 60 years of age of older who have functional limitations which restrict their ability to carry out activities of daily living and impede their ability to live independently. The Senior Care Act program was established by the Kansas Legislature to assist older Kansas to live independently within the community with support services. The Senior Care Act program provides assessment, case management, and coordination of in-home services to eligible participants. The program is funded through the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services. The contractor agrees to accept compensation at a rate of $25 per unit for case management services as established by CPA. This is a billable unit for 15 minutes of case management services. The budget authority for this was already, was included in the 2017 budget. No additional budget authority is being requested, and this is a program funded through state dollars. There is some match dollars that the counties do pay for the individuals that reside in their communities that receive the services. We do, as the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, oversee this program for all three counties, Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick. The services for Sedgwick and Harvey are provided by our staff. Butler County has been providing this service for many years. This just formalizes this, puts this in a contract format as required and requested by Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services. So we oversee, this program currently is closed. There was a pretty significant budget cut, as you might recall, last year, which was about a 35% cut in funding. So the program is closed. No additional clients are coming into the program. They will continue to case manage those people that they currently have on the program. This is for a one-year time period, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
All right, thank you, Director Graham. I appreciate your presentation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the agenda item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Are any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second. I don't have any questions. I think you did a great job presenting. Appreciate you explaining all of that, and seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
All right, thank you, next item, please.
Item H, Agreement with Butler County Department on Aging to Provide Case Management Services to Butler County Residents for the Older Americans Act In-Home Services Program 2017.
Commissioners, this is very similar to the previous item. However, this is for the Older Americans Act. So the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging will enter into a provider agreement with Butler County Department on Aging to provide case management services for Butler County residents age 60 and over that qualify for the Older Americans Act In-Home Services Program. Again, this agreement details how the agency will provide that case management services to residents 60 years in age and older who need these support services to help them remain in their homes and community. The Older Americans Act Title III B Program provides assessment, case management, and coordination in-home services to eligible participants. The program is funded through funds from the Kansas Department on Aging. However, this is a federally funded program under the Title III B, Older Americans Act. A billable unit for this is also 15 minutes. This program is set up in such a way that it's a 90-day short-term program, and it's targeted to individuals age 60 and older who are coming out of hospitals or nursing homes rehabilitations, and to help them transition back to the community and be successful in that transition. So this program is ongoing, and every 90 days, the program participants do change. Last year, we served 352 individuals in the three-county region, Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick. And out of that, 41 of those served were in Butler County. Again, we oversee this program, and we make sure that the numbers that they serve are consistent with more, more similar to their percent of the population. They have about 12%, when we look in our total region, they have about 12% of the seniors in our three-county region. Last year, they served about 14% of the population, I mean, 14% of the total numbers that we serve under the Older Americans Act Program. But we do oversee that and kind of monitor and manage to make sure that those percentages stay pretty consistent with that. Again, this is a one-year contract, and I would be happy to answer any questions about that.
All right, thank you, Director Graham, for the explanation once again. And is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the recommended action.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Seeing none, Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item I, Reported the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on December 22nd, 2016.
Good morning, commissioners. Chairman, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of December 22nd results in four items that we're bringing before you this morning. Item number one is the Mental Health First Aid Instructor for Calm Care. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Tom Pletcher, LPC, and establish contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is the Criminal Competency Evaluation Services and Mental Health Pre-Admission Screening and Resident Review for Calm Care. And the recommendation is to accept the proposal from Connie Gaston, LLP, and establish contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number three is the Next Generation 911 Phone System for Emergency Communications. This recommendation is to execute a contract with a 911 Coordinating Council for an annual cost of $496,026 for the life of the system as deemed by the Emergency Communications Director. And our final item, item number four, is the Oblique Imagery Flight for the Appraiser's Office. And this recommendation is to accept the overall loan proposal from Pictometry International Corporation in the amount of $211,633, and establish a contract for three years with three one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and we also have representatives from divisions and departments that can do the same, and I recommend approval of these items.
All right, Director Thomas, great job presenting the four items for us to consider this morning. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the agenda item this morning? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second. Just want to say, there's a couple of items on this list that I'm excited about. One of those is the upgrading of the 911 system. To me, is tremendous. The county is doing that at this time. I think it's important. If I understand correctly, the entire state of Kansas is, is trying to get the counties to move in this direction, and this is us basically coming up to speed. And this may help us with some of our, our data gathering in terms of our performance measures, how much time people are on hold, and that type of thing. It's been in the news a little bit, helps us manage our calls a little bit more effectively. And so I think this is an important step in that direction to help solve some of those issues. And I hope that the public understands we're, we're sensitive to that, and we're trying to solve it. So this is a, a great thing for us to do today. Thank you for that. I don't think I have any other questions or comments. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items, Juliet through Zulu.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items, Juliet through Zulu.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items, Juliet through Zulu.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items, Juliet through Zulu.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Items, Juliet through Zulu.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, please call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ransow?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
All right, next item, please.
Legislative Issues?
Commissioners, is there any, is there any legislative issues we'd like to discuss this morning? Or from any of our staff that would like to bring up any legislative issues? They just want to remind us, ourselves, once again, we are hosting a legislative reception this evening for the legislators. But after that, at 6:30 this evening, there is a legislative forum in this building. That's in the jury room on the first floor of the Sedgwick County Courthouse at 525 North Main. And the public is encouraged to attend. The doors will open at 6 o'clock, and you can sign up to speak. If I understand correctly, the format has been amended so that the public isn't going to be allowed to sign up and speak. I believe they'll be limited to one minute each. They're trying to get as many people through that process as possible, so they're looking at between like 70 or 75 people to speak this evening. So that's going to be an opportunity for the public. And with that, I just wanted to say, again, we, in terms of legislative issues, we did pass our legislative platform last week. In terms of legislative issues, we have the opportunity, I have the opportunity Thursday as County Commissioner, Chairman, to address the South Central Legislative Delegation on Thursday at Wichita State University, and to discuss the platform with them, as well as Friday at the Packard Room Club. We will have a opportunity to discuss our legislative platform Friday at noon. And that is a, an opportunity for everyone. That's, the public is certainly welcome, but you do have to purchase a lunch to attend. And that's Friday at the Ruffin Building at Broadway and Douglas, noon on this coming Friday. And so those are some opportunities in terms of legislative issues. And so is there anything else for legislative, legislative issues this morning we'd like to discuss? All right, seeing none. Madam Court, next item, please.
Other?
Commissioners, we have a number of things to do this morning that are in other, but before we get into the meat of it, I wanted to present a video this morning. Six months ago, we did a video, kind of a half-year video, to talk about some of the accomplishments of Sedgwick County. This is an opportunity, I think, for us at the end of the year to, to kind of reflect upon what we've done in this previous, this last year. You know, you see this on a lot of, a lot of organizations take this opportunity, the changing of the calendar, to, to reflect on what they've accomplished and what they've done. And I always like to, to highlight what I consider to be good news for Sedgwick County, and I think there's a lot of things to, to highlight this morning. So with that, I ask our, our video folks and our, our Public Information Officer to, to put together a short video, and so that, we can kind of reflect upon the things that have been done this last year by this commission. I'd like to credit all of the commissioners here on this bench today for the accomplishments of Sedgwick County this last year. So with that, I'd like to ask our PIO to go ahead and share that video with us now.
It's been a busy year in Sedgwick County. The Board of County Commissioners have been working for you in many different ways.
This has been a fantastic year for Sedgwick County. We're very proud of the fact that we've been able to finally address several issues that have been longstanding.
Training. A new law enforcement training center will be built at the WSU Innovation Campus, allowing the Sheriff's Department an up-to-date facility. And firefighters will now have the ability to train at the Regional Fighter Training Center.
Helps, helps retain quality firefighters, but also it helps them perform better when the citizens need them.
This is something that the county's been talking about for, as I've heard, 17 years.
Quality of Life. Sedgwick County contributed an additional $5.3 million to help pay for these guys.
But this year, to hit 700,000 exceeded the expectations by everyone.
Lake Afton Observatory reopened, allowing visitors a unique view into the sky. Health and Safety. A new EMS station is being built on South Oliver, enhancing coverage throughout the county. 135 miles of roads were improved and 10 bridges built, creating a 501(c)(3) partnership with Calm Care.
501(c)(3) does provide an opportunity for them to do fundraising and to engage the community in a different way that they have never been able to do before.
Serving You. Consolidating services for local builders and homeowners into the Ronald Reagan Building.
I want the people to know that. This is important, that people understand that we are reaching out and finding ways to work with Wichita, to find efficiencies.
This former grocery store is now the county's new tag office, offering a larger facility with better amenities and locations.
It's a comfortable place for, for people to go to. It's a face of government.
Elections. After a successful election season, new voting machines are planned for future elections. And accessibility. Making meetings more accessible, holding meetings where you live. Open Finance. A new online feature allowing you to see the county's financial information. Strategic Plan. Creating a mission statement to help focus on priorities.
This helps us be more effective and efficient in what we're trying to do here.
Sedgwick County has accomplished so much during 2016. We look forward to serving you.
I want to say thank you to our, I want to say thank you to the folks that put that together. In fact, it was hard to, to settle on, I just counted, I think it was 13 items presented in that two-minute video, and there's more we could share. There's things I'm very proud of that Sedgwick County has done this last year that are kind of in the weeds, type of things that aren't quite as noted by the public perhaps, but they're, they're accomplishments nonetheless. And so these are tremendous accomplishments. I think this has been a stellar year. I think back to the budget process this last year, I think it went very well. We were able to pump a lot of money into public safety especially, and to address some compression issues that I think was long overdue. So I have to credit our management staff, especially Sedgwick County Manager Mike Scholes, for leading us with our budget process this last year. And of course, there's just so much to be proud of. This has been a stellar year, and I think that, as I reflect back over the last year, it's just been a lot of subject matter and a lot of accomplishments. I want to say thank you to the commissioners, and thank you to our management staff for all that they have done to make this all happen. And I hope we get to share that video a little bit on social media, and people are aware of the good things going on in Sedgwick County. I'm very proud of Sedgwick County. With that, commissioners, this is the time of the meeting that I'd like to, just want to say thank you to, to two outgoing commissioners, Commissioner Norton and Commissioner Peter John. I have considered it a tremendous privilege to be a colleague of yours. I looked, I looked to your expertise here. You guys are tremendous experts in your, in what you've led in your districts and led on the bench over the years. I'm very impressed, and I consider it a great privilege to have the chance to work with you, and to work with you on these things and many others. I consider you both to be my friends, and I wish you the very, very best. With that, I wanted to, I actually, I asked Commissioner Ransow first if he'd be willing to, to present something to Commissioner Peter John, and some of make some comments in regards to Commissioner Peter John's service here to the county. Commissioner Ransow's been here six years, and Commissioner Peter John's been here eight, and so I think it'd be fitting for Commissioner Ransow at this time to go ahead and make that presentation. With that, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Ransow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say a few things in, tell Commissioner Peter John how much I've appreciated working with him over the last six years, his friendship and all of his hard work. I want to go over a few things that, that this commission has accomplished while he's been, been on the commission. Granted, he's just one of five, but these are some things that have been important to him that he's worked on throughout the years that I think are important. First and foremost, the jail overcrowding issue, I think, that's been ongoing since you first came in. commissioners Glenn Welshheimer, Kelly Parks, Jim Skelton, who I also had the privilege of serving with here, because it is truly a collaborative effort. And, you know, we've had a lot of votes where, in some cases, I've been in the majority, in some cases, in the minority. But when I first came up here, I said we're going to disagree, and I'm going to do my best not to be disagreeable in the process. And I think that's a commitment that I've been able to, been able to make. And I want to give, express appreciation in particular, not only to our current county manager and his staff, but the other county staff who've had to kindly enough answer my questions, and I, you know, I seem to have one more, one more thing in terms of questions often to throw out, and they've been able to provide that information for me. And I feel like Sedgwick County, we came in with some difficult national economic times, and Sedgwick County's been struggling, and I am so deeply privileged and honored to be able to thank everyone. And it is a true, truly wonderful opportunity today to be able to receive this, and I want to thank everyone who's been involved.
I want to say thank you for your comments, Commissioner Ransow. I appreciate those, and I agree with everything you said. I want to just say, Commissioner Peter John has made a difference in Sedgwick County, and he, he's truly a public servant. I use the, I usually, the word, he's a statesman, and he is an honorable man. I want to just say thank you for your service, Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you. And I, I'm remiss. I was prepared to give a jail population report, and why January forced an important day in American history, but I'll let that go by the wayside since I think we have other important recommendations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're going to miss those comments today, but I understand, it's great. And likewise, I want to just say, once again, you know, Commissioner Norton has done a tremendous job here. He has, he's also been a statesman, he's a very honorable man, and he's made a tremendous difference in Sedgwick County. With that, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Unruh. I've asked him, because he's been here 14 years so far, and Commissioner Norton's been here for 16 years. I think that Commissioner Unruh understands and knows him better than anyone. I'd like to ask him if he would be, want to make some comments at this time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a few comments about Commissioner Norton. In conversations with Tim, he said repeatedly that his journey as a county commissioner has been its own reward. And as he's been involved in these activities, he said he doesn't really need or desire a lot of accolades or congratulations as he leaves the bench. But I feel compelled, and I want to say something about my friends, so I'm going to take a few minutes here and congratulate him. I think Tim's service to our community has been pretty widespread and well-known by members of, members of our area. He's served on many community boards. He's served well on the Board of County Commissioners, on county commissioner initiatives. He's taken a lead often. And he's served the wider county commission community, and the Kansas Association of Counties, and at the National Association of Counties. And so we appreciate not only the specific things he's done, but also the servant attitude that he's displayed while he has been a commissioner. As I indicated, he's been involved in a lot of different decisions that have greatly benefited our community, and over a 16-year period, I don't want to rehearse through all of those, but some of those significant things were, as a commission, we've moved forward, and Tim's had a significant part in that. The National Center for Aviation Training is one, Downtown Arena, our Public Safety Building on North Main, Child Advocacy Center. It was active in, as we established, alternatives to incarceration. Also was, helped move forward on the Ronald Reagan Building. He's been a big advocate for health services in our health department, and been active in healthcare issues. And he's obviously, as we know recently, been a very strong advocate for solutions to the flooding in the southern part of Sedgwick County. But despite all those activities and achievements and advancements that Tim's been involved in, I guess I'd say that as a colleague who's office next door to Commissioner Norton for 14 years, I'd tell you that I will miss his enthusiastic, and his energetic, and his optimistic personality that many of you have become familiar with. So I just want to say congratulations to Tim for a job well done, and I will present to you a little later, a gift from the Sedgwick County Commission.
Thank you, Dave. I have a few comments. One of them is, I have eight grandkids that I'm going to serve now, and that's going to be very important to the next phase of my life. Thank you to all my colleagues and to the county for being who they are and so, working so hard for the people of Sedgwick County. It's important work we do, and let us always remember that it is public service, not politics. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Norton, for those comments. Commissioner Unruh, for your comments as well. I'd like to echo the things you said this morning, and I want to just say with a heartfelt, as much as I possibly can, I just want to say thank you, thank you for all you've done for the county. Appreciate both of you very much.